Good evening. How are we all doing? Excellent, thank you, thank you. They're coming, they're all coming. I'm going to call to order this special meeting for our budget hearing tonight here at 6:30. And I'm going to open that public hearing for fiscal year 2025 and 2026 budget. And we're going to have a presentation by Mr. Phil Green.
Thank you Mayor, good evening and good evening council members. So this is the annual required official public hearing for the fiscal year 2026 budget. This was advertised in the newspaper to start at 6:30. It is a requirement of state statute that it run as long as the huge crowd that is here to speak about the budget is allowed to speak. And so we're prepared to allow that to happen. I'll do a little bit of an overview first. So let's talk, start with the org chart. So Erin, if you want to open this up, I did email this out to all of you today. So this is kind of the updated one. Let me, let me remind you, I guess, of kind of where we've been so far in this budget process. Way back on July 29th, we had our budget workshop. And I think I started that night by saying, this is the beginning of the beginning. And it is a long process. Well, tonight, we're at the end of the end. So it's been a fairly long process of taking some extra time during that month to talk with you, to have you share some insights. We had the official proposal of the budget at the very last council meeting, which was August 26th. At that night, you made several really good suggestions and made some alterations to items in the budget. And all of that is reflected in the final numbers that are being presented to you tonight, including this version three of this particular org chart. It's a little harder to see some of the colors, so I'll try to highlight some. But basically, Police Department is located here. We not only have the current officer positions that are being hired right now, which ends up being Officer 19 and then a Sergeant number 20, but you worked it out so that we could have for a full fiscal year, two new positions, numbers 21 and 22. So those are referenced on here. We also decided to move forward with what is currently a part-time, our part-time animal control officer and replacing that position with a community service officer. So we're literally going to be doing away with one job description, bringing in a separate job description. The current person who's in that part-time position is more than welcome to apply for the other position, but it is technically a brand-new position. So that's the Police Department. We are moving forward with one paid position. Undecided right now exactly what the title might be, what the roles might be in the Fire Department. We budgeted just three-fourths of the year of funding for it. So we would not hire anybody before January of 2026 anyway, but that does give us a good three months to continue to work with the Volunteer Fire Department, understand what their needs are, take their input, and decide what would be the best potential thing to go forward with. A couple of positions here in the middle that are in the utilities area. One is a utility worker number one, as well as then a wastewater treatment plant operator over here. Both of those receive all of their funding from a combination of the Water Fund and the Wastewater Fund. So it doesn't impact General Fund at all. So those positions are a little bit easier to be able to afford from that standpoint. And then finally, over here on the far right-hand side, the last couple of positions, you did authorize to move forward with the additional deputy administrator position. So we'll be working on that job description, try to have most of the job descriptions that are for new positions to you at the next council meeting. So get those approved by the end of September so that we could begin hiring in early October. And then the last position is the IT assistant and GIS technician. And that GIS piece is going to be an important piece, but I would describe it as not a critical piece, that that person will be available to us on staff to be doing kind of the basic elementary GIS work that right now we contract for. So it will be a financial shift instead of paying a contractor to, to being able to use that to help provide another employee who'd be a great assistant to Tom at various times. So those are the organizational positions. Any questions you have for that? Otherwise, Erin, let's go on to the next document, which is the budget summary. In this one, I was able to then finally put together the two pages that oftentimes you do see. This very first page, we've looked at a couple of different times. This basically lays out for you that, that the tax asking that we're going to be laying before, or that you would be laying before the citizens. Up at the very top is the total valuation of the city. So again, only about 3.66% growth this year, which was much, much smaller than we've seen in recent years. Because of that and the new limitations that the state imposed, we were able to readjust some dollar amounts in the budget and not have to appear at the joint county meeting. So what we end up with down here, about in the middle of the page on the right-hand side, is the total tax asking compared to last year. We'll be talking more about that during the seven o'clock meeting. And in fact, the setting of the levy, I'll talk more about here in just a minute as well. But the total tax asking this year would be the $3,158,601.30, which ends up being the maximum allowed to not have to attend that joint meeting, which this year computed out to be 2.92%, not 2.93, 2.92%. So we're staying within that boundary. Erin, look at the next page. This gives you on one page, a synopsis of, oh no, sorry, it's on that same, it's in that same document, it's just a second page. And this is one that, that you hadn't seen yet this year, but it's on one page that shows you all the different departments and funds of the city, what the actual amount spent was from two years ago, what the current year's budget and estimate is. And then the right-hand column is this proposed budget. These numbers are all the same budgets for all of those big, long 11-by-17-inch documents that you have, but it's all concisely laid out on one page. And we'll see all of these numbers again later on then in the ordinance tonight for the funding. A couple of quick things that I'd mentioned here, you'll notice at the very bottom of the page, Erin, if you scroll all the way down, the total for all of the funds, and ultimately, that's really what you're approving. You're approving this bottom dollar amount to potentially be raised in whatever ways we're capable of raising that, through property taxes, sales tax, fees, other purposes, and potentially spend it. And that number for this particular fiscal year would be $101,750,508.1, which is about a 10% increase from this last budget year. But I will remind you, that number swings rapidly depending upon what kind of construction projects are going on. Also depends upon actually what kind of cash we're trying to have on hand. And so we're trying to save up some money for a potential City Hall remodel someday. So all of that gets reflected in these numbers. So just because you see it doesn't mean we're going to spend it as real cash. It just simply means that it's available to us. But Erin, as you go back to the top of the page, you'll notice here, for the total general fund, it's actually a decrease this year from last year, as far as what was budgeted. But a lot of that's reflective of the fact that we had Generations Park that we were finishing up this last year and paying for. And that's all part of the general fund, even though the, you know, there were gift monies that were included in there, there was sales tax money that was there. It's all expensed through the general fund. And so we see some of those reductions in those particular categories. You'll see some other areas like water that are substantially more than what they were this year. And it's time to start paying off all of those bonds that were utilized to help pay for the construction. So we have a little bit of construction that will be finished up at the beginning of the year, and then mostly start making large payments on those, those bonds going forward. All right, Erin, if you close that document, unless there's any questions from anyone.
What, what do you attribute the big increase? I know we're going back as far as we do on the chart, the 23, 24, $772,000 to $1.8 million now in '25, '26. What do you attribute that?
And which, which line item are you looking at?
The very top one, general fund expense or administration.
Oh yeah, administration. And part of what you'll see is, keep in mind, we always budget for possibilities even though they may not actually happen. And so there's going to be some substantial monies that may be in the budget category each year that don't, don't reflect. What, what you'll see here is actual spent two years ago, $770,000. That did go up to a million dollars this last year. And obviously, we've added some staff and that gets reflected in that particular number. But we budgeted 1.6 million and only ended up spending just a hair over 1 million, or that's what we're estimating if the rest of the year turns out. So next year now, we budgeted 1.8 million compared to the 1.6 million that we budgeted this current year. I don't anticipate that we're going to spend that. And in fact, I know there's at least $750,000 to a million dollars of that that we want to hold on to as cash, because we're trying to accumulate that for a future remodel someday. But that number gets reflected in that. So the more cash we have on hand, the bigger that number gets. So again, it's not always a number that means we're spending. It just means it's cash or resources available, if you will. So, good question. The last two things that I just wanted to mention as part of my presentation is that we will be running another notice in the newspaper, probably this coming Friday, regarding the, this actual budget. And it's only because a couple of the numbers were slightly different. Erin, if you want to bring up the notice there for V2, and you can take a look at V1, but let me just reference it, there's just two numbers that are on this chart that changed slightly. And the two numbers are shown in three different places, but it just ends up being two different numbers. The, the state has their budget form that you have to submit the budget to them inside that form. And in the state budget form, you automatically have to estimate for this current fiscal year what you think you'll spend. And then that rolls over as cash forward based on the resources that you think you'll have at the end of this year as well. There's no way to adjust those numbers at all. In our budget, in those big budget sheets that I've been giving you, I've been giving a slightly altered expectation of what I think is going to end up with. The state doesn't really care what might happen. It just has a hard number and says, well, if you typed in this number, this is all going to roll forward. And so that number was slightly different. And so it's this line here, which is called the total resources available, $101,750,508.1, is slightly higher than what it was before at $100,774,864. So there was just a little bit of money in there. Mainly, it was cash carried forward that the state form requires me to just leave that way. I can't adjust it at all. I'm able to adjust it on our own budget forms, which I did. I'm hoping our new software next year makes this a little bit simpler and easier for me. What we are not changing at all in this new notice is the level of taxation, the dollar amount that we're asking for, or any of those things that most of the citizens will be concerned with. And keep in mind, that $101 million number, as we just talked about, is, includes cash on hand, includes money that we budget that we aren't going to spend. We don't know what subdivisions might get developed out there, so we've got money that's potentially set aside there. We, we only spend money if somebody decided to build a subdivision and we got bonds. And so cash would be coming in. All that money coming in and money going out is all counted in that $101 million. So it's almost kind of a weird phantom number, but it is slightly different than the one that was advertised previously. So that's why you'll notice that this is going to be in the newspaper. And you'll notice we even changed some of the language, scroll up just a hair, Erin, changed some of the language here and went from future tense that the original notice said that we will be meeting on the 9th. This one now says we met on the 9th and went over these numbers. And you have to add some explanatory language. And so we added, this corrected notice shows a higher disbursement and total resources for this budget year, but the same tax requirements. So again, that's what's allowed by state law. If the numbers change slightly, but you're not asking for more in taxes, you just simply need to run this notice again and make that explanation. Any questions that you have for me? Otherwise, we'll open it up to the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any comments from the public? Having none, I will close the public hearing. And now I will open another public hearing on the proposed one-year plan for street improvements for fiscal year 2025 and 2026. Mr. Heaton.
Good evening Mayor, Council. Thanks Erin. So yeah, each year, just like the budget hearing, we're also required to have a one-year street plan hearing. You may remember it as the one and six hearing. A few years ago, the rules slightly changed. We only need to have the public hearing on our one-year plan. So that's what we're doing right now. In your packets and on the screen is our one-year plan and also our six-year plan on the same map. And there's a lot on there. And it doesn't mean that we're going to do all of that this year. The one-year plan is kind of tricky because if even a block of milling and overlay that we want to do in this next fiscal year, and it's not on the one-year plan, we have to go back and amend that. So we've kind of taken the approach of catch-all of any and everything that we may end up doing a mill and overlay, U-Bass, new street gets on that one-year plan. So that's, the majority of this is all the one-year plan. All, it's kind of hard to see on here, but all the red lines are the one-year plan. And then the blue would be the six-year plan. And you can see there is also, in Spark is a list of each of the segments. There's a lot of potential mill and overlay projects or U-Bass projects that staff will be looking at in the next couple of months and then come back to you sometime early spring with a plan. Talking with Lowell and the Street Department guys is, I'd like to come up with an option A and B, whether we go all mill and overlay, all U-Bass, or maybe an option C where we do a little bit of both. The, the U-Bass, we can go cover more ground, but the pavement underneath has to be good enough to hold that. So there's some streets that are just too far gone to do U-Bass.
It is a nice smooth drive.
It is.
It looks sharp. The other day, it was very nice.
And then I'll just kind of point out just a few of the six-year things, primarily the North Bypass, and then any of that work on Hollow Road, which depending on funds and appetite, we may, may do an amendment to the one-year plan later on if we decide to do that work on Hollow Road, 25th Street, County Road 31 later this fiscal year. And then there's also on the one-year plan would be the Honeybee Lane Road at the Blair Crossing Apartments. That one's already in the works and is going to start. I believe the Highway 133 work, you might see some work getting done yet this fall. And then the Highway 30 side would be next spring. And then as Phil mentioned, there's a few kind of gap paving districts or money set aside for potential developments if that would happen, but those would only be done if needed. Happy to answer any questions anybody has.
So the North Bypass is emptied as being part of the six-year plan. Is that actually feasible?
I'm guessing it'll be in the six-year plan for more than six years.
Fantastic.
Yeah. And you know, first time going through this. So a lot of these things, like I said, we put a extra stuff on the one-year plan that we know we won't get. We'll just roll that over into next year, the same with the, the six-year. It's just kind of, we turn this into the state and then they can kind of see what's on the horizon, what communities are doing. If there's any state, federal funding, they may need to start planning ahead on. But we are in those initial phases of the North Bypass already designing and kind of getting a feel for where it might go. Hopefully, it's not 35 years like the South Bypass, but I don't, I don't think we'll get it done in six years either. Thanks.
Thank you. Any comments from the public on the one and six-year plan? Having none, I will close public hearing. Next, I will open another public hearing to set fiscal year 2025, 2026 levy different than fiscal year 2024, 2025 levy. Mr. Green.
Thank you Mayor. Erin, on the attachments, let's see what's out there under number 11. And if you want to bring up the summary sheets again, the top one. I've got those notices out there too, again, just so you can see how those numbers show up on that. But this is the required public hearing that has to be had whenever you're going to change the amount of the levy. And don't be confused, the levy can be used in two different ways. It can be referred, you can use the word levy to refer to the dollar amount of the tax asking or the request that we're making. You can also use the term levy then for that percentage or that number that people like to look at as, as how much per hundred dollars of valuation you're going to be assessing somebody. Both of those are the levy. Obviously, they're related to each other because the county establishes the total value of all the, all the real property that's within the corporate limits. When you decide then how much tax-taking you're going to establish, then you run those numbers percentage-wise and it comes up with that percentage. And so that's how all of these numbers are related. And we are asking for more this year, sort of change in both the real dollar amount as well as the percentage. But the dollar amount's going up, the percentage is going down. And so I'll show you that number on this particular form. So here in the middle again is the total property tax levied. And what we're asking for is this right-hand column. Again, this is the maximum amount you could ask for and not go to the joint public hearing. And again, which is a combination then of the growth amount that you get from development inside the town as well as 2%. And since growth this year from real developments was only 0.92%, add the 2% on that, that gets you that magical 2.92% that we have to stay with. And so the actual dollar amount asking would be going up to the $3,158,601.30 from last year's $3,068 and, oh, $68,993.50. Again, that 2.92% increase. But Erin, as you slide down, just to bring it up so it's more in the center of the screen, if you could. Here, this bottom line represents again how that works out based on what the value is that was established for the city. And this number is going down. And so here's the total value of the city. Again, grew by just 3, 3.66% this year compared to those other numbers that are out there. Our levy is broken up into three separate funds, the general fund, debt fund, and street fund. And we're able to use those numbers, you know, in whatever proportion is necessary, both on the street side and on the debt side. And then the general fund, it kind of makes up the difference depending on how high you want to go. But ultimately, we're looking at this year, a combination of 28.4501 cents per hundred dollars. Look in the newspaper with all of the public hearing notices that are being shown, and you will not find anybody close to that municipal-wise. I think one of the other cities that's in the, in the county was at 54 cents. We're at 28. So when, when people complain, you know, and no one likes to pay taxes, I don't like to either, but when they do, remind them of, of how these numbers have dropped, you know, substantially. For a long, long period of time, we kind of maintained at about 35 cents. We're allowed to go to 45 cents plus five for debt purposes. So you could go all the way up to 50 without any kind of special vote for a city, a city of the first class. But because our valuation has been growing, we're able to, you know, take a reasonable amount of additional funds and yet have that actual levy number go down. And so this year, it would drop by 4.81%, which means, again, for those people who, when they got their tax statements this year, if they didn't see any increase, or if it wasn't increase, it was no greater than 4.18%, they will actually see a tax decrease from the city this year. Now, the city only represents a small part, oftentimes 15 to 20% of what their total tax payment is. We get blamed for most of it. But you know, we're, we're not the primary culprits usually, but we've, I think, been doing our part to try to keep that down. And so it's a reduction of the percentage, down 4.18% because of the value increases that we've seen over the last few years. Any questions on either one of those numbers that are changing? The real dollar amount that's going up, but the actual levy then percentage that's going down? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Having none, I will close the public hearing. Would someone like to make a motion to close the meeting?
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Or adjourn the meeting.
To adjourn the meeting.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to adjourn our budget hearing. Please register your vote.
All council members, President Votting Eye.
Meeting adjourned. We'll reconvene as a council in six minutes.
Yeah, he did. Jake's got to turn around.
He's hot, let it fly.
Yeah, I think he did. Jake, are we good? Okay, all right. Excellent. Good evening. I call to order the September 9, 2025 meeting of the Blair Mayor and City Council. I am Mindy Rump, the Mayor of Blair, and I am pleased that you have joined us this evening. This is a public meeting and I do encourage you to be part of the process. You may participate, ask questions, and share your thoughts. I want you to feel comfortable and I will do everything that I can to make sure that your voice is heard. We do have some rules to help us proceed with this meeting and I ask that you please keep them in mind. If you have a cell phone, please turn it off, and if you need to take a call, step outside the chamber. When you wish to speak, simply raise your hand and I will acknowledge you and you can come forward to the podium. Brenda Wheeler, our city clerk, must record who you are, so please state your name, spell your last name, and state your address. Keep your remarks brief, about three minutes, so that others have the opportunity to speak. And please direct your comments to either myself, city council, or to our city staff. A copy of the Open Meetings Act has been posted by both exits and we will begin this evening with a roll call of members.
Tanner?
Present.
Halston?
Here.
Long?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Willis?
Here.
Clark?
Here.
Fletcher?
Yep.
Hifield?
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you. If you'd please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number four, approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Please register your vote. Are you on, did you switch meetings? Did you switch to the seven o'clock city council meeting?
All council members, President Votting Eye.
Motion passes. Item number five, consider resolution 2025-83 approving Kyle Herbert and Brian Keller as new members of the Blair Volunteer Fire Department. Chief Leonard.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, city staff. Fire Chief Leonard, as you said, here to approve a couple of new members. I have one here tonight with me as the other one is running around with his children, taking them to activities tonight, so he wasn't able to make it. Tonight, I have Brian Keller here with me. Lived here in Blair for four years, was a former EMT out in Los Angeles, California, married with three kids and worked from home. So a great asset that we can add to the department as he worked from home. The other one that was mentioned was Kyle Herbert, a father of three, 19 years with Omaha Fire, and he currently serves as a captain and has several certifications. So he will be a great asset to the department. So here tonight to get approval to have these two young men join the department.
Very good. And council members want to introduce?
I'd like to introduce Resolution 2025-83.
Resolution number 2025-83 was introduced by Councilmember Hifield approving Brian Keller and Kyle Herbert as new members of the Blair Volunteer Fire Department.
Move we adopt Resolution Number 2025-83 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution Number 2025-83. Please register your vote.
All council members, President Votting Eye.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard and thank you for your sacrifice. All right. Item number six, consider approval of a new liquor license for Corman Bar and Grill LLC doing business as Black Label Blair. 1631 Washington Street, Blair for a Class One liquor license, beer, wine, distilled spirits on sale only. Is the applicant here? Oh, wonderful. Come on up. Sorry, no worries.
Hello, Jason Corman, Fortuna, Nebraska.
Spell your last name.
K-O-R-M-A-N, 1631 Washington.
Great, thank you. Does the council have any questions?
When do you open it?
Yeah.
This week in October, hopefully.
First week?
Oh, wow, it's good.
Very good, excellent.
As long as all the equipment shows up.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Having none?
Motion to recommend approval of a Class One liquor license for Corman Bar and Grill LLC DBA Black Label Blair to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the Class One liquor license for Black Label Blair. Please register your vote.
All council members, President Votting Eye.
Motion passes. Item number seven, consider ordinance 2593 to adopt the budget statement for fiscal year 2025 and 2026 and to be termed the annual appropriation bill appropriating such sums of money necessary to defray all necessary expenses and liabilities of the city of Blair, Nebraska for fiscal year 2025 and 2026. Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mayor. Aaron, I'll ask that you go ahead and bring up that first document, which is the actual ordinance. And again, council members, you have that in front of you tonight. This is the end of the end. This is the official designating of it, and this is the appropriations bill for the city. Again, what you're approving tonight with this bill is the total, total dollar amount of resources that are potentially available to meet the needs of the city. Again, we had a public hearing that started at 6:30 tonight, went over a little bit more in detail some of these numbers, so not going to rehash all of them, although I will read several of them that are going to be on the second page of this particular document because I think it's important to get it in the record and have it be clear what we're looking at. Again, the public hearing that was held earlier was advertised in the newspaper and the public was invited to come. You'll notice in section two of this particular document that it specifically says, "There is hereby appropriated for the use of the city of Blair, Washington County, Nebraska, the sum of $101,750,050.80." Again, that is that total bottom-line number that if you remember that one-page synopsis had that number at the very, very bottom. This number is not what we'll be spending this year. That's not what this number means because we're not going to spend all the cash that we've got. We're not going to spend all the resources that we have. We're not going to do every single project that has been budgeted for. But this is the total number that you're authorizing that potentially could happen, you know, depending upon what else could occur. And you notice the sentence goes on, "to be raised and acquired by the levy of general taxes, special taxes, fees, grants, and by bond issues." So it incorporates all the different resources that the city has available to us for this fiscal year. And it's broken down into funds, and so if you go to page two and what's up on the screen here, this is a specific list again, same list that was on that one-page synopsis that I gave you earlier or that we looked at during the budget hearing and the numbers that are associated with each of those funds. And if you think back all the way to the end of July, when we first started talking about budgets again, the reminder that a fund is a, is a container, if you will, that resources come into and then resources can be spent out of. And there's always going to be a remaining cash balance in a fund. The largest fund that we have is the general fund, and many of our city departments are all part of that general fund. But we do have some enterprise funds like water and wastewater that are separate, and then there's several other funds that represent oftentimes different ways that resources can come into the city. So for the sake of the record, I'm just going to read what's exactly on this page, and it'll take a minute, but I think it's important for the citizens to understand what all these numbers represent. What you're approving tonight with the overall $101,750,050.80, now you'll see it some places as 81 cents, that's a rounding issue because by doing the math, the computer, you know, is doing these things out to multiple digits, sometimes it rounds up one penny or another. But we'll try not to spend that last penny, we'll keep it in the bank. But here what we have is for the general fund, you're authorizing $10,393,727.33. For the debt service fund, $15,292,676.97. For the street fund, $26,830,131.62. For the rescue squad fund, $667,846.27. I'll pause there just for a second. You recall that we accumulate money in this account so that we can then pay in cash when we need to buy that next rescue squad. So this number should keep going up. That doesn't mean we're going to spend it this year, it means we're accumulating it this year, getting ready for buying it down the road. The sales tax fund, $5,291,456.95. The insurance and wellness fund, $513,503.40. Wastewater fund, $7,067,790.48. The water fund, $30,724,653.42. The hotel occupation tax, $262,770.98. And again, I'll pause here just to remind you that the hotel tax also is one where we have receipts coming in on a regular basis, but we store them in this fund and that we use them for various purposes around town, for community development, for marketing, for trying to entice people to come, the art projects, some of those kinds of things that we've been doing downtown to encourage people to come to Blair, all get paid for through this. But that doesn't mean we're going to spend it all, it means we've got this much resources available to us. In donated funds, which again, we don't specify who's going to be donating, but these are the kind of funds that do come in and then often are donated to special projects in town or sometimes to certain departments in town like the police department, and then it's up to them working with the various committees from the council to decide how to spend those monies. Donated funds of $194,397.33. The economic development LB840 fund, $3,660,63.42. But I'll remind you here that we are, have been the recipient and holding on to right now $2 million that was a grant from the state for the Dana Village remodeling project that Lutheran Family Services is going to be going through. And so that $2 million is part of this $3,660,000, okay? So substantially more than what we normally have had in recent years. The Keno Fund, very much like the hotel occupation fund, the Keno Fund, $419,568.91. And then we have all the various current active TIF projects that are going on. TIF III, $50,371.76. And again, just a reminder to you and the audience, the way TIF works is that the businesses, once they are established there and built there, they pay regular taxes. But the incremental part of what is above and beyond what used to be taxed on that particular property is captured, sent to us to be held in this fund and then is used for no more than 15 years to reimburse them for any eligible costs that they may have had. And so these are funds that didn't come from us, they didn't come from the citizens, they actually were paid in taxes by these particular property owners. We're just holding on to them now and then distributing them back to them. So for TIF number four, this one is a little unique because this is the Dana Village one or Dana Campus one, and we do have some public infrastructure that we put in up there. So part of this is our money that we're paying off some of our own bonds for. TIF IV, $246,637.98. TIF V, $66,264.19. TIF number six, $18,320.12. TIF VII, $39,270.3. TIF VIII, just $3,100. TIF IX, we don't anticipate any activity this year. That was the apartment complex that potentially was going to get built up off of 25th Street, but they didn't get their state grant, therefore the project's dead. That's out of our budget process. And then finally, TIF X, which is the Blair Crossing project, we anticipate just $7,500 this year in activity because again, they won't be capturing. seventy-five hundred dollars this year in activity, because again, they won't be capturing any of the taxes that they pay for a whole nother year. All of those added together, together get us that one hundred and one million, seven hundred and fifty thousand, fifty dollars and eighty cents. Questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from the public? Having none, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce ordinance number twenty-five ninety-three, adopting the budget statement for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
An ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriation bill to appropriate sums of unnecessary expenses and liabilities to the city of Blair, Nebraska for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of October, 2025, and specifying the objective of each appropriation and amount for each object and purpose, repealing all ordinance conflicts therewith, providing this ordinance shall be a full force effect, providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
I move the statutory rule regarding reading on three different dates to be suspended for consideration of said ordinance.
Second question.
The question for the council is, shall the statutory rule requiring reading on three different days be suspended? Please register your vote.
All council members present voting aye. An ordinance to adopt the budget statement to be termed the annual appropriation bill to appropriate sums of unnecessary expenses and liabilities to the city of Blair, Nebraska for the fiscal year commencing on the first day of October, 2025, and specifying the objective and purpose of each appropriation and amount for each object and purpose, repealing all ordinance and conflicts therewith, providing this ordinance shall be a full force effect, providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
I move for final passage of ordinance number twenty-five ninety-three.
Second question.
The question now before the council is, shall ordinance number twenty-five ninety-three be passed and adopted? Please register your vote. All council members present voting aye. I declare ordinance twenty-five ninety-three duly adopted. Item number eight, consider resolution twenty-two-five dash four, setting the levy for the city of Blair and the Blair Airport Authority for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Mr. Green.
Thank you again, Mayor. So now you have the resolution that is required, again, by state law, whenever the levy is being changed, whether the dollar amount being asked for is changing, or whether the percentage amount is changing, both are required. The six items that are on the front page, and Aaron, if you want to bring up the resolution, just so those in attendance can see, these six particular questions are all mandated by state statute to be in this resolution. And so, this is not just me kind of deciding, hey, here's something I want to tell you about our numbers, these are all required to be here, and so I'm going to take the time to read them, because the legislature feels that they are important. So again, this is setting the property tax request, and it is different than the current year is for next fiscal year that begins in October. So number one, the 2025, 2026 fiscal year property tax request be set at general fund of two million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-five cents. Again, this is the amount of money in taxes that you'll take through property tax that goes into this particular fund, into the general fund. So earlier, on that one-page sheet, when we showed the different breakdowns for each of those three different funds, that was just percentages I showed you, this equates to what the dollar amounts are, and at the top of that page had those dollar amounts that way. For the street fund, two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-seven cents, and for the debt service fund, five hundred and nine thousand, thirty-eight dollars and seventeen cents, and that one has gone up substantially, but it's because of the public safety bonds, and now having to pay off those public safety bonds, which we'll be doing for the next ten years. For a total then, in property tax asking, of three million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and one dollars and thirty cents. Number two, the total assessed value of property, which is one billion, one hundred and ten million, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, twenty-four dollars, differs from last year's total assessed value, which was one billion, seventy-one million, nine thousand and eighty-three dollars by three point six-six percent. Okay? This is so that the citizens understand that the city has grown, the value has grown. Well, if you had asked for the same dollar amount with this new value, that would have greatly reduced then the actual levy, the percentage-wise amount, because of, again, the way the math works, we'll see that here in a minute. Number three, the tax rate, that percentage amount, which would levy the same amount of property taxes as last year, last year being this current fiscal year, when multiplied by the new total assessed value of the property, would have been point two seven six four three zero per hundred dollars of assessed value. But of course, we're asking for a point two eight, a little bit more than that, and all of this is again, required by the state to be shown, and it was actually shown in the public notice that was in the newspaper. Number four, the city of Blair proposes to adopt a property tax request that will cause its tax rate to be as follows, follows, and so those dollar amounts that were listed earlier, here's now the percentages, which again, were shown on that other sheet, the general fund being point two one five two four four, street fund being point zero two three four zero seven, the debt service fund being point zero four five eight five zero, or for a total tax rate of point two eight four five zero one per hundred dollars of assessed value. Again, twenty-eight cents, basically, we oftentimes call it then, twenty-eight cents per hundred dollars of valuation. Again, as I said, take a look at the notices that are in the newspaper. Some of them are in the fifties, fifty cents, you know, this is twenty-eight cents, so really good for our citizens. Number five, based on the proposed property tax request and change in other revenue, the total operating budget of the city of Blair will increase last year's budget by nine point four-two percent, which is true, that total bottom line dollar amount, but that includes all of our funds, includes the water fund and paying back all those bonds, the other improvements that are being made, and so, but it's not fair to say, and it's not true, the general fund isn't going up, in fact, it went down compared to this last year, it's the total overall of all the funds that got you to that one hundred and one million plus, is increasing by nine point four-two percent. Number six, that the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025, 2026 for the city of Blair will require an increase in property taxes of two point nine-two percent from the previous year. Again, that's that statutory limited amount. And then the last number that I'll just want to show, top of the next page, refers to the Blair Airport, which again, they're a separate board, but they get their taxing power through the city. State law allows an airport board to automatically get up to three and a half cents per hundred dollars. Anything beyond that, you would specifically have to approve, it's below that still this year. So in a sense, even if you voted this thing down, they could get this money, but here it's clearly stated in this particular resolution, that for the Blair Airport Authority for the fiscal year that begins again October first of this year, it's set at point zero three zero one three four per hundred dollars of assessed value. If you're interested, it's not required on this page, but what that equates to is three hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars, is what the airport authority will be getting from property taxes from the citizens of Blair to help support the airport. Sixty-five, seventy percent of that goes towards debt payments for the airport. The last few years, with the addition of Corey Trevor, we do have some administrative costs that we're now taking through some of this as well, at just a little bit over eighty-nine thousand dollars. So, but total for the airport, three hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and sixty. Any questions that you have for me? Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Having none, council?
Motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-four.
Would you like to introduce it first?
Oh, yeah, introduce resolution twenty-two-five eighty-four.
Resolution number twenty-two-five dash eighty-four was introduced by Councilmember Letcher, setting the levy for the city of Blair and the Blair Airport Authority for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-four is presented.
Second.
Excellent suggestion. We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-four. Please register your vote. All council members present voting aye. Motion passes. Item number nine, consider resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-five, approving the one-year plan for street improvements for fiscal year 2025 and 2026. Mr. Heaton.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'll just touch on this real quick, again, about half an hour ago, we had the public hearing on the one-year plan, so this is now where the council will approve that if you're up for it, I guess. Lost what I was going to say, sorry. But yeah, it's just so everybody's aware, the one-year plan, there's a lot on there, we are not planning on doing all of that this year. I think this year, we have, as years passed, budgeted about four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in mill and overlay projects, which are all included in that one-year plan, and then some. So happy to answer any questions, if you have any, otherwise I'll get out of your way. Thanks.
Any comments from the public? Having none?
I'd like to introduce resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-five.
Resolution number twenty-two-five dash eighty-five was introduced by Councilmember Clark, approving the one-year plan for street improvements for fiscal year 2025, 2026.
I'd like to make the motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-five is presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-five. Please register your vote. All council members present voting aye. Motion passes. Item number ten, consider resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-six, for the installation of a stop sign on Twenty-first Street at South, going northbound. Mr. Heaton.
Thank you, Mayor. So yeah, we are proposing to install a stop sign on Twenty-first Street, heading northbound at South Street. West through the transportation committee, for staff to look into this. I think there's a picture. Yep. So we've got South Street, east-west, Twenty-first Street, north-south, what we'd be looking at is a stop sign, stopping the northbound traffic on Twenty-first Street as they get to South Street. My understanding is that it gets especially busy on Sunday mornings when the Catholic Church that's just south of here, when they get out and their services are over. If you've driven through here at all, South Street, as you know, does go up a pretty steep hill, so when you pull up to that intersection without the stop sign there, you know how people drive, the visibility with that hill is not the best. So I think having a stop sign here will at least get most people to stop, take a look, make sure the traffic's clear, to avoid any issues, so. Any questions on that?
And CG, will they flag that, because it's new?
Yep, we'll flag new ones, I don't believe we'll put flashing lights on that, but definitely flags.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Having none, Transportation Committee.
Yes, we did meet on this, and the line of sight is not very good on that hill, going up or down, so with that, I'll introduce resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-six.
Resolution number twenty-two-five dash eighty-six was introduced by Councilmember Wolf, for the installation of a stop sign on Twenty-first Street at South Street, northbound.
Motion to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-six is presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-six. Please register your vote. All council members present voting aye. Motion passes. Item number eleven, consider resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-seven, approving agreement with JEO Engineering to conduct a Blair East industrial blight study along Highway thirty East. Mr. Green.
Thank you, Mayor. What you have is a resolution approving this agreement with JEO to do this blight and substandard study. Aaron brought up the map of the area, so what you're looking at here is where the blue outline is, is the area that would be included in this. Some of these other areas are already in a redevelopment district, and this would potentially, if, as it goes through this whole process, is eventually approved by the council, would potentially then become part of the redevelopment district. Just for the sake of everyone here, redevelopment districts are important, because you cannot do TIF projects outside of a redevelopment district. That's the whole point, is that you've designated this area as needing some redevelopment, or potential for redevelopment, if it's the kind of project that is good for the community, in line with the comprehensive plan, and ultimately approved by the council. So this is a study to evaluate this area, we're required by state law to have an independent outside party do this evaluation for us, ultimately then, they'll put this study together over the next couple of months, they'll come and present it then to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission's role and responsibility is to say, number one, do they have any questions about the details of the plan, but is ultimately designating this area in conformance with the comprehensive plan and in need of redevelopment, they'll make a recommendation, it'll ultimately come back to you as the council then, for approval, if that's the case. One of the things that's true in Nebraska is that cities of the first class are limited by the amount of area that you could have in a redevelopment district. Not necessarily limited by the number of TIF projects, it's limited by the square footage of the area in a redevelopment district, and you can't have any more than thirty-five percent of the community in a redevelopment district. Right now, we're somewhere north of thirty-two percent, so there's not a lot of area, of course, we have had a couple of annexations over the last few years, so that percentage may be down a little bit, that'll be part of what's going to be evaluated in the study, is he'll let us know. If for some reason, this area would take us over the thirty-five percent, you couldn't approve this without removing some of the other areas first from a redevelopment district, but again, that's completely up to the council to do as you see fit, so we may have to deal with that situation sometime down the road, just to be aware of that. But total cost for this is seventy-five hundred dollars, in our current budget, through the community development area. And again, there have been some discussions already by property, or potential property developers in this particular area, wondering if it was able to be TIF, and we've told them that, you know, TIF is not available unless this would ever be placed into a redevelopment district. Any questions?
Why does the blue go up and around that one section on the body right there?
Right here, because this is already in a redevelopment area, and so this is KJK Circle, there was a development that was done in there, there's now three businesses, I think, that are located in there, maybe a fourth one coming in on the eastern side. That area was specifically requested years ago to be studied, and was put into a redevelopment district, simply so that they could do TIF projects within that little area. But at that point in time, they just did this small area, we're trying to incorporate, you know, most of the rest of this. Now you'll notice, we did stop at where Industrial Drive is, did not include this undeveloped area, which we could have, but, you know, that's one of the philosophical things that the state legislature and specific legislators are wrestling with, is how much should undeveloped ground be declared blighted and substandard? And it's never been in the city limits, that's one of the requirements, or not a requirement, one of the criteria that could declare it blighted and substandard, is if you had parcels that had been in the city limits for more than forty years but never developed. That seems to indicate there's an issue there, of why hasn't this been developed? And we have parcels that are undeveloped after forty years that are within the city of Blair, some are in redevelopment districts, some are not. I just felt like, you know, there was really no need to necessarily go farther east towards the river there on that one, but Industrial Drive, especially where the tree farm is, you know, that's being marketed actively right now, there's some potential for development to occur in some of these areas, just felt like now would be a good time to look at this particular parcel, for these parcels. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? Judiciary Committee.
We did meet on this, we talked about it, this is something we can use in our toolkit, if we do approve all this, that we can further develop this area for, you know, more industrial or more commercial on US thirty there. There's no questions from the council, I'll introduce resolution twenty-two-five dash eighty-seven.
Resolution number twenty-two-five dash eighty-seven was introduced by Councilmember Hyphal, approving agreement with JEO Engineering to conduct a Blair East industrial blight study along Highway thirty East.
I'd like to move to adopt resolution twenty-two-five eighty-seven dash eighty-seven as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number twenty-two-five dash eighty-seven. Please register your vote. All council members present voting aye. Motion passes. Mr. Green, do you have a report?
I think it's been two months since we've seen him before at ten o'clock. I think it's been two runs since we've seen him before at ten o'clock.
Hey, we could, we could, no, no, we're not going to. I already texted my wife, we're done, okay. So, a couple of things just to bring to your attention, and number one, for the audience to let you know, we are going to have an executive session, and so we're going to shoo everyone except the council out of this room for a while. We, we usually try to do the executive session at the very end, and hopefully not have to have any actionable items afterwards, so that we can just be called back into general session and then can, you know, have a request to, to end the meeting and be done with it. But unfortunately, there are two items that we have to act on, that we're going to be talking about in the executive session tonight, and so everyone is free to stay, if they choose to, they're going to leave, we'll escort you up into the very front of the City Hall office, you'll have to sit up there until we're done, we'll come get you then and come back. Again, no obligations obviously by anyone to, to stay, I do believe the, the fee that's being done and shown is going to end at this time and not come back after the executive session. So again, there are two different items, if you go to the city's new website, then that's something that you can go to Spark and kind of see what the vote results were on that eventually tonight, but just want everybody to know that that's going to be coming up afterwards. Now that you've approved the budget, there are several things that need to get implemented from that budget, and a lot of that has to do with personnel, so I'll just let you know right now, at the next council meeting, we plan to have job descriptions ready for you to be reviewing, there were several suggestions over the summer that our CAP team has worked with the Finance Committee on, and is making a recommendation, all of those dollar amounts have been included in the budget, so we'll be bringing lots of that documentation to you for implementation at the very next meeting, and just lots of activity going on, again, you're probably aware of moving forward with the new finance package, that continued, that project continues to go well, we're anticipating going live in mid-November, that also means though, that utilities and utility payments and how that is all processed also has to change, so we're working on a schedule right now, either next meeting or the first meeting in October, we'll come to you with kind of an outline of what it is that we're looking at doing, and I'm kind of looking at this as almost a three-month process of educating our citizens on the changes that are coming. Well, that means we start pretty much at the end of September, at least in October, to do October, November, and December, just so people are comfortable with how payments are going to be made. Jake, I did not do this earlier, but why don't you come on up real quick, Erin, if you want to flip over to the website, we did go live today with the new one, so Jake, give a, just a, two minutes, over.
All right, the new website went live today, so we are now blairne.gov, so Nebraska's no longer spelled out, we are now a .gov website, thanks to a lot of help from Tom White, IT Director, getting that for us, so we are a little more official now. Website is live, a lot with the color scheme to match the school district, bring community pride, a lot of the pictures you see have been submitted via social media from the citizens and residents, so I really went into the community base for this new website, you want to scroll down, Erin. Some of the big changes is, the social medias are now on the side, as you go down a little bit more, keep going, Erin, buttons all have some hometown swag to it, pictures throughout instead of just a generic one, and then keep going, news and events, and schedule, the calendar here, it was compressed a little bit, you used to see this news is, went all the way across, and you have to keep scrolling to get to the calendar, so we compressed it so that way it wasn't scrolling as much, the whole goal between, behind the whole new website was making it easier for residents to find it, so they had to click to click to click to find something. The library has its, its portions updated as well, another cool portion that's really nice is if you hover over departments, Erin, you used to not be able to see all this, usually, I think it was Fire Department and Finance was cut off because this was big, so they compressed it down to you can find which department you want, and then it expands over to the right side, so really making it easy that you don't have to scroll and lose it. That's about it in a nutshell, everything was just about making it easier to find stuff to click to get more, and again, pictures are all from residents, color-based throughout town and everything like that, so.
Looks great, Jake, a lot more user-friendly, thank you.
Is that going to change our email addresses or anything?
That is.
Yeah, so the, the most important thing I would stress is, don't panic, because the current, the current ones are going to work for years, okay, but we're switching domain-wise on where everything ultimately is going to reside, over to this, this .gov, so I think, Tom.
They're live now, or could they start using them or not, or technically?
Okay, we'll let you know when you want to start experimenting, you know, but, but yeah, we're, we're on the cusp of getting all that done, but the blairenebraza.org is going to work for literally years, and then we'll be doing the slow process, because we, we have some generic ones that we use inside City Hall for like City Clerk, Finance, some of those kinds of things, the different departments at the state email us through all those, so it'll be a long process of up kind of reminding those people and updating them, you'll probably begin to see a tagline that we'll recommend that you put, you know, at the, at the bottom of your email that just simply says, hey, the official address now is blairne.gov, switch over to that one, as soon as you, as soon as you want to, so. But yeah, appreciate Jake and all the hard work that he and Tom have been putting into this, again, the, the organization that we use called Civic Plus, that really is the backend of all this, and they specialize in governmental websites, generally tries to do a refresh with communities about every three years, but there's a lot of work involved in providing them the resources to make it look good like that, and I love the local pictures, because, you know, nobody likes to go to their hometown website and just see generic pictures of generic people, you know, we want to see our own generic people, it's lovely, so. All right, CJ, why don't you come on up real quick and give a good update regarding certain traffic signals?
Oh, he's getting pre, pre-applause.
You don't know what I'm going to say, yeah, so.
You want more money.
You know, Phil said we're not necessarily going to spend all that money, and, well, come back next week. No, so all four of the mast arms got finally installed today, so all of the lights are up, the overhead streetlights, as you can see in the picture on those arms, those are all installed, those should be, the overhead light should be turned on tomorrow, is my understanding, once the state, not, not the traffic lights, just the illumination.
Yep.
It sounds like if all goes well and the state does their review and everything clicks along next Thursday, those streetlights will be off, so. If that falls behind, we'll let it on the state.
It would worse, though. That should be needed.
Yeah, so the state has to take the controller back, they set all the parameters for the timing, the signals, how the traffic, the, like the green turn arrows work, that whole thing, so, once they get that all programmed, they'll bring it back up, do a final walkthrough, and we'll get them going.
So yeah, very excited to see that go forward, again, I, I'm, I'm happy even tomorrow just to get the, the streetlights on, because at least that way it'll be a lot easier at night to be able to see as you're in the middle of that intersection and see kind of what's going on, but to have the signals work is really, really great. CJ and I then will be working with the Transportation Committee to talk about speed limits, because that was the next thing that we have on the docket, is that once the lights were in, the state said now's the time for us to begin to have that conversation about what kind of speed limits would we like to see in this particular area, keep in mind now, we've annexed all the way down to that South Cargill entrance, so Anthony Way, so speed limit could be affected all that way, you know, all the rest of the way into town, as the council chooses to request and work, work the state, so. If there's any questions from you, I'll answer those, otherwise, again, just a reminder to the audience that we're going to be going into executive session, you'll notice that the council first has to act on several things, and so they'll make several different motions, several comments that'll be made, we'll let you know when, when we will be either escorting you out or escorting you to the front, again, people are free to stay if you'd like to, there's just two agenda items that would be acted on at the very end of this meeting, so, any questions you have for me? Thank you.
Thank you. Item number thirteen, executive session for the protection of the public interest for the following potential litigation and possible litigation involving the city of Blair, no action will be taken.
Make a motion to go into executive session at seven forty-three PM for the following reasons, to discuss possible litigation involving city of Blair and to preserve attorney-client privilege.
A motion has been made, whoops, second, thank you, a motion has been made and seconded to go into executive session for the limited purpose to discuss possible litigation involving the city of Blair and to preserve the attorney-client privilege. Please register your vote.
All council members present, voting aye.
Motion passes, this motion has been carried to go into executive session for the limited